Yes, or what I said earlier is that this is, so this, this is 4 squared times 2 over 2 squared, which is 8. But we know that for the electric field of, for the electric field to cancel out here, E2 must point to the right, which means Q, uh, Q must be a negative charge. So if the absolute value of Q is 8, that means Q2 itself is equal to minus 8. Because the, the fact that the absolute value of Q is 8 means that Q could take the value of plus 8 or the value of minus 8. But only minus 8 is consistent with this problem. Because if Q were positive, then the field could not cancel out at this point. Uh, because the two fields will, will both be pointing to the left. Will both be pointing away if both charges were positive. Does that make sense? Okay, so let's move forward.
3 equal positive charges are placed on the x-axis. One at the origin, one at x equals 4 meters, and the third at x equals 6 meters of the following points which has the greatest magnitude of electric field.
So the first point is x equals 3. Where will 3 be located? The point at, so, so plus a Q. Now, now Q here, Q2, Q3, both positive. The first point is x equals 3. Where is it located?
You said the first one is x equals 3?
The first answer is x equals 3. Where is x equals 3 located?
In the 21 and 2, in the 21.
Okay, between Q1 and Q2, so, so that'll be here, that's x equals 3. Now, at x equals 3, tell me the direction of the electric field from Q1, Q2, and Q3, starting with Q1.
Q1.
Q1 is, both charges, all three charges are positive, so Q1, the electric field will be to?
It'd be pointing to the right.
To the right, away, okay? That's E1. How about Q2?
Q2 would be pointing away towards the left.
Okay, that's E2.
And how?
And Q3?
And Q3 would be pointing away towards the left too.
How do you know that?
Because all of them are positive, and when it comes to electric fields, your charge, whenever you have a charge or a positive charge, the arrows are going to be pointed away. And if you have a negative charge, it's going to be pointed towards the point. So for example, you see that, uh, well, we all know that all the, the charges are positive. So since we put x3 there, like for example with Q1, Q1's positive, so the arrow is going to point away from the char, away from the positive charge that Q1 has. It's going to point to the right. But with Q2, the, it's positive as well, but it's not going to point in the same direction. But it's going to point away from the charge, but it's going to point to the left. So it, the same goes for Q3 as well.
Okay, good, excellent explanation. So basically, we're using the fact that for positive charge, the electric field goes like this. Okay, away. So if the point is to the right of the charge, then the electric field will go to the right. If the point is to the left, then the electric field will go to the left. For negative charge, you have the reverse, the electric fields point inward. Okay? So, so the net field at, at this point, it's x equals 3, the, the net field will be in which direction?
It's going to the left.
So, at, uh, x equals 3, E net will be E1 minus E2 minus E3, okay? Because E2 and E3 are negative, in the negative direction, E1 is positive. So this, this is the net electric field at that point. The next point is x equals 5. So at x equals 5, which is somewhere between Q2 and Q3, okay, so somewhere here, what is the direction of E1 at, at x equals 5?
E1 is pointing to the right, away from it.
Okay, so away from Q1 means to the right, okay? And then Q2?
Q2 would be pointing away from it to the right as well.
Okay, to the right. That's at E2. How about Q3?
It'd be pointing away, but this time it would be pointing away towards the left.
So at this point, we have E1 plus E2 minus E3, okay? We have E1 and E2 pointing right and E3 pointing left. Now at x equals 5, sorry, x equals 7, that means somewhere here to the right of Q3. So E1 will be in which direction?
E1 would be to, pointing away from, towards the right.
So E1. How about E2?
It'd be down science time.
How about E3?
It'd be pointing away towards the left.
No, you missed it this time.
It'd be pointing away towards the right.
Away from Q3, this time means to the right, because the point is now to the right of, of Q3, okay? So the electric field at this point, you have E1 plus E2 plus E3, okay? So which of this is the greatest? You can try, uh, x equals 0. So at x equals 0, we know that E1, uh, E2 and E3 will be that way. But there'll be no, no E1. Because, uh, Q1 doesn't have any, cannot exert a force on itself. Cannot create an electric field, uh, on itself. Does that make sense?
Yep, so the answer would be x equals 7.
So the answer is x equals 7, that is C. Because at this, at this point, the electric field is, uh, the sum of the 3, which will definitely be bigger than this one and bigger than this. Because for the other 2 options, you have to add 2 and then subtract 1 or subtract 2 from the other. Any questions? No, okay. Good, so let's, let's, uh, that means we're making progress, let's move on to.
Yeah, I don't understand it, but, uh, we don't have time to go back over it.
Okay, I encourage you to chat with your classmates, with those who understand the, the concept between now and the final, or now and the second test. Or you can, you know, talk to me later. Number 8. Okay, somebody read number 8 for us quickly.
The average distance of the electron from the proton in the hydrogen atom is 0.65 times 10 to the negative 10 meter. What is the electric field from the proton's charge at the location of the electron?
Okay. So the electric field, so here, the asking us to calculate the electric field, and it's directly KQ over R squared. Uh, Q is the charge of the proton. And your R is the distance from the proton to the electron, which is 0.65 times 10 to the minus 10 meters. And K is given, so you just plug in these numbers, and you should get 3.4 times 10 to the 11 newtons per coule. Okay? Number 9.
2-point charges are separated by 16.0 centimeters and have charges of plus 2.00. You see, and negative 2.00, you see respectively. What is the electric field at a point midway between 2 charges?
Okay, so you have the charge of plus 2 microcoulombs and minus 2 microcoulombs. So midway between those charges, since it's separated by 16, so from here to here, we have 8. 8 to the, so the electric field for charge number 1, this is, uh, Q1. This is Q2. Electric field for charge number 1 will be in what direction?
Forward.
It's going to the left.
Quinton, charge number 1, the electric field at this point, at the midpoint, where will the electric field be? Will it be away or will it be towards?
It'd be away.
Away from Q1 will mean which direction?
The right.
To the right, okay? Q2 is negative, so will it be away or towards?
It would be toward.
Okay, so E2 will be also to the right. So your net electric field will be E1 plus E2, which is K times Q1 over R1 squared plus K times Q2 over R2 squared. R1 is 8 cm, which is 0.08 meters. And, uh, R2 is also 8 cm, which is 0.08 meters. Q1, Q2 are plus 2 microcoulombs, remember, micro means 10 to the minus 6. So you plug this in and you will get 5.6 times 10 to the 6 newtons per coule.
So you're saying that we plug that into the equation, that's what we do, that's it?
Yeah, we plug in, K is given here, 8.99 times 10 to the 9. Q1 is 2 times 10 to the minus 6 coulombs, divided by 0.08 squared plus K, the 8.99 times 10 to the 9. Q2 is also 2 times 10 to the minus 6. Since you're taking the absolute value, the minus sign doesn't matter. And then R2 is also 0.08. The bottom line is here, you're adding the field. Uh, many students looking at this problem will be tempted to pick E, because they will think that the positive charge and the negative charge will cancel out. But it doesn't work with, like that in electric fields. You have to look at the direction of the field based on the, uh, the fact that electric field is always away from positive and towards negative. And if the fields are pointing in the same direction, then they cannot cancel out. Now, if both of these charges were positive, then the field will cancel out, because then you will have, uh, plus 2 microcoulombs and then plus 2 microcoulombs. So here, midway between the charges, uh, if this is 1 and this is 2, your E1 will be that way, your E2 will be that way. And since Q1 and Q2 are the same, K is the same for both, R1 and R2 is the same for both, then the net electric field here would be 0. Okay? If you have plus and plus, maybe you have positive and negative, it's impossible to have a 0 electric field between the 2 charges. Okay? Number 10.
So, a 7.2 microcoulomb charge is placed at the origin, and the second charge is placed on the x-axis at x equals 0.1 meters. If the resulting force on the second charge is 5.5 newtons in a positive x-direction, what is the value of the charge?
Okay, so this is similar to the to the problem we did on electric field, but the difference is, it's talking about force. So we have, let's say, this is your origin, x equals 0. So you have Q1 equals 7.2 microcoulombs, and then let me just magnify this. You have x equals 2. And you have Q2. And they're saying that the force on the second charge is 5.5 newtons in the positive x-direction. So that tells us, it tells us the charge has to be what? What sign must Q2 have?
It must be positive.
It has to be positive, because, uh, 2 positive charges will repel each other, okay? So the only way the force of 1 or 2 could be to the right is if 2 is positive. If 2 was negative, then the force from Q1 will be to the left, it'll be attracting it. Take note, number 10 is not about electric field, it's about force. Okay, so always read the problem completely and make sure you're clear with what the problem is talking about. So the problem says force, so don't read electric field into the problem, okay? So what is the force between these 2 charges? Or what is the force of 1 or 2? Which equation gives us that, that, uh, force?
Would that be coulomb force?
That's coulomb force, K times Q1, Q2 over R squared. And your R in this case is what?
Um, 0.16 meters.
Okay? R is 0.1 meter. So we know, we know F, we know K, we know Q1, we know R. But we don't know Q2, so solve for Q2. Q2 would be equal to F times R squared divided by K times Q1. Okay, so 5.5 newtons, 0.1 meters squared divided by 8.99 times 10 to the 9 times the absolute value of Q1, which is 7.2, times 10 to the minus 6 coulombs. And the answer to number 10 will be that. Okay, take note, this is Q, the absolute value. Now, how do we know that it has to be plus 0.8 and not minus 0.8? The answer is, uh, the, the force between Q1 and Q2 could only be repulsive, that is to the right, if Q2 is a positive charge. If Q2 was a negative charge, then the force would be to the left. So C would be wrong, if you said that C, that would be wrong, because that is inconsistent with the wording of the problem. Okay, number 11.
An 8.8 volt battery connected between 2 parallel metal plates, 4.4 millimeters apart. What is the magnitude of the electric field between the plates?
So the separation of the plates is 4.4 millimeters. So the electric field for 2 parts of the plate is given by what? What is the equation? It's, uh, the element is not KQ over R squared, obviously, because there is no Q in this problem, there's no point charge in this problem, so what is it? Quinton? Who else do we have in here? Tiffany?
Yes?
Yeah, what's the electric field between 2 plates? What's the equation? Okay, so there is an equation like that for electric field. But remember, the problem here says the magnitude, so we don't care about the negative sign in this equation. So the magnitude of E will just be equal to delta V over D, which is 8.8 volts divided by 4.4 times 10 to the minus 3 meters. Make sure you convert to the SI units. And when you do that, you will obtain 2 times 10 to the 3 newtons per coule as the electric field.
Oh, what chapter is it, um, was that chapter?
This is chapter 19.
Oh.
Electric potential, and this is both chapter 19 and 18, okay? So it's, it, it cuts across both chapters. So for point charges, you know that E is equal to K times Q over R squared. That means you have a charge here. And the, the asking you to find the electric field at the distance R from that charge, so you use this equation. But now, when you have 2 conducting plates connected to a source of of, uh, potential, electric potential, then the electric field, you cannot use KQ over R squared, it doesn't make sense, because you don't have any point charge. So now, instead, you will use the voltage across the plates and the separation, how far apart the plates are. So the electric field will be minus the potential difference divided by D. So it's the same thing, but for different situations. So the electric field of 2 plates are supposed to the electric field of a point charge. Okay, so do not confuse the 2. You should be clear, when you read the problem, which of the 2 equations you should use? If you want to use KQ over R squared, it won't work here, because there is no Q. And I'm giving you voltage. Okay, so, uh, let's move on to number 12.
If the electric field is accelerated from rest through a potential difference of 1800 volts, find its approximate velocity at the end of this process.
Okay, so here, this is chapter 19, so when you, when you accelerate a charge, okay, and pay attention to the fact that it accelerated from rest. So that means initially, the initially, the, uh, the electron, the velocity of the electron is what?
0.
0, so VI is equal to 0. And they're asking you to find VA. Okay? So when you accelerate an electron through a potential difference, uh, the electron loses potential energy and then gains kinetic energy. Or you could say the, the, the energy is being converted from potential to kinetic. The same way, uh, as if you drop something from a certain height, the potential energy due to gravity begins to reduce as it falls, but the object begins to pick up speed, that means its kinetic energy begins to increase. So the equation to use here is the equation of conservation of energy. The change in potential energy has to equal to the change in kinetic energy. Okay? But gravitation, uh, electric potential energy in this case is Q times delta V. That's the formula for potential energy. And then change in kinetic energy is 1 half mv final squared minus 1 half mv initial squared. But what is, what is V initially?
1, I mean 0.
0, it's accelerated from rest. So that means your V final, you're going to solve for V from this equation will be 2 Q delta V divided by m and then the square root of that. So square root of, your, your, your Q is 1.6 times 10 to the minus 19 coulombs. Your, your delta V is 1,800 volts. And then your m, the mass of an electron, is 9.11 times 10 to the minus 31 kilograms. And that will give you a speed of 2.5 times 10 to the 7 meters per second. Okay? I mean, can you see the correlation with chapter 19?
Hmm, yes.
Okay, so the problems in the practice, uh, are not very different. The wording may sound slightly different, they're not very different from the ones in the book. In the book.
It's just that for some of the questions, I wouldn't have thought to um go about. Doing it that way, like for number nine, where we had to add the E net to do that, I wouldn't have thought of it.
I agree, so again, you have to solve. Uh more problems to see the different possibilities or the different ways that problems could be phrased. Okay, so. Number thirteen, what is the unit of electric potential that uh dimensionally equivalent to? So electric potential V. Is equal to what? What is the formula for V? Okay, that's one equation, but this is not useful, okay? Now, we also know that from the last problem we just solved, the potential energy is equal to what?
Q times delta V.
Q times V, okay? The change in PE is Q delta V, but the P is just Q times V.
Okay.
Okay? So uh P is in joules, Q is in coulombs. And V is in what? Well, that's what we're looking for. So V would be equal to. So V will be equal to joules per coulomb. Okay? So basically, we say V is equal to PE divided by Q. Which is joules per coulomb. Number fourteen. Find the electric potential six point six five meters from a point charge, so V is equal to KQ over R. Okay, so that is. Eight point nine nine times ten to the nine. Times Q, which is six micro coulombs, so times. Six times ten to the minus six. Divided by R, which is point six five meters. Okay, and that is. Going to give us point eight times ten to the five volts. Okay, so number fourteen is just a direct plug in problem. Okay, number fifteen.
Two point charges of values um plus four and plus. Um yeah, one fifteen, four point four micro coulombs respectively are separated by point three meters, what is the potential energy of this two charge system?
Okay, so P is equal to what? Q times V, but we don't have V here, so what do we do? We have two charges inside. Is there another equation for PE? Okay, so P is equal to K times Q. Times another Q divided by R. Okay? Now you can look at it this way, okay, look at this. What is this? What is KQ over R? What is K times Q over R?
K times Q over R is um.
That's. What is that?
Velocity.
No, voltage, potential, potential, Q times V, this V is not velocity, it's potential, okay? Do not confuse the two. So P is Q times V, but that's the same as this, if you have two charges. If we knew V already, then we'll just multiply Q by V, but since we don't know V, we have to uh go by. Uh this equation, so the 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 PE will be. Will be eight point nine nine times ten to the nine times the Q one, which is. Four. Times ten to the minus six, times four point four. Times to the minus six. Divided by. R, zero point three, take note, the R is not squared, it's just R. So this energy will be positive because both charges are positive. So the answer to number fifteen will be plus zero point five joules. Okay, so. Number sixteen. Now we have. Less than one minute, I'm going to stop here and uh when we reconnect, we're going to have like. Ten minutes to run out because I need to. Uh run home and set up for this, for the next review session with the other class. So please reconnect immediately because we don't have any time to.